Good evening and welcome to our February Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our March meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask you to stand with me and I'm going to ask Mark to do our prayer and Brian if you'll do our pledge.
Father, we come to you today with grateful hearts, Lord, just thanking you for everything that you give to us and the things that we take for granted each and every day. Lord, we want to lift up our special people that go out and make our town look good and our employees that keep us safe. And, Lord, with all the water and the issues that we've had lately, Father, we just ask you continue to keep a hedge of protection around those that are working in the water and trying to keep people safe through their travels. Be with the people over in Ukraine, Father, the unrest in the world there, Father, just continue to watch over all those people and pray for our leaders of our country, all countries. Pray for this body here as we do the business of the town. We ask this thing in your name. Amen.
Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark and Brian. We will now move into our items for discussion. Our first one is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Pyro Shows Incorporated for the town's 2022 fireworks show. Chief?
Mayor, council, we have brought in front of y'all tonight a contract to renew the fireworks show for our Independence Day celebration. They've held the same price and I'd ask the council to please give the mayor permission to sign this contract.
Counsel, any questions about this? Seeing none, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item two, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with R.J. Young relative to the purchase of a copier for the fire department administrative offices. Chief?
Again, I have a contract here from R.J. Young. We have the funds in our budget to purchase a network printer and I would ask that the council give the mayor permission to sign this contract, please.
Questions for chief on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll put it on the agenda, move on to item three, it's approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Minnesota Children's Museum for the rental of a Curious George exhibit for the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. Mike, how are you?
Yeah, I'm great. Thank you, Mayor, council. This item here was coordinated by our staff, the SOAC staff, and working through us, but it is a Curious George, pretty popular exhibit, and it's STEM related, so it has education behind it, but it's also a summer rental for us and it's the time that we have summer camps, we have a lot of people in and out of the building and then a lot of parties due to the pool. This is typically anywhere from $45,000 to $70,000 exhibit, depends on how it's broken up. We were able to get it for under $25,000, which is great. I would like to note that we'll probably bring this in a little bit later than what's on the schedule and the agreement. We have a rental down at the building, they're going to need all the space they can get, so we're going to have a little bit, we'll probably set that up late May and open it up on June 4th, so that's the reason. You'll see that on the next, on the council agenda, you'll see the dates change in the packet there. I just ask for your approval.
Questions, Mike, on this? Seeing none, we'll put it on the agenda, move on to item four, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement relative to the extension of the contract with Barton Lawn Care for mowing park properties through the 2023 mowing season.
Yes, ma'am. As y'all well know, Gary Barton and his team do a great job for the town. We're just asking for renewal for the parks properties. As you note in the summary there, they're very flexible with us on a lot of our events and coming out a little early or late to mow properties and also they obviously had the contract last year and done a great job for us. We're just asking for renewal of that contract for the 23 season, or 22 season.
Questions for Mike on the contract for the park properties? Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Barton Lawn Care relative to the mowing of non-park properties.
Yes, ma'am, that was up for bid this year and this agreement or contract is similar to the Parks Agreement. It's a two-year term with an option to extend it two years if all parties agree. And this was about 64 properties, I counted them up earlier, and I've got Jimmy Stitt here, Jimmy did the lion's share of this along with some staff and other departments and they just, they worked hard on this with finance to get this bid together and I commend them for that. So if there's any details, he can answer those. But we had two bidders and we opened the bids on February the 10th, Brightview and Barton. And Barton appeared to be the lowest and best bidder and obviously they're aware of the standards we have in the town of Smyrna, but also the properties. So we're asking to approve a contract with Barton Lawn Care.
Questions for Mike or Jimmy on any of this? Okay, seeing none, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Inrix to share data related to vehicle travel times and origin and destination of travel flow.
Thank you, Mayor, council, very good pronunciation. Yes, TDOT has put specialized equipment in our cabinets, including some BlueTote equipment, a MyoVision, they collect data as far as number of vehicles approaching intersections, amount of time a vehicle travels from one location to the other. They use Inrix software to process that data. This is just an agreement with them to be able to obtain that data. With it, we'll be able to look at possible changes to traffic signals to make sure that we have good timing on the traffic signals.
Questions for Tom on this?
Does this cost us anything?
Disagreement, no.
Do you like that, H.G.?
I think that's a good thing.
Me too.
I didn't shop local with it, though. Sorry.
H.G., you got anything to say to that?
Oh, man. You gotta get with program.
I'm sorry.
He ran about Brittany.
She was okay with it.
Okay, it's going a little far now. Okay, any questions for Tom? Any comments for Tom? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is consideration of a resolution relative to requesting refunds on unclaimed property held by the state of Tennessee. Rex?
Mayor and council, passing this resolution allows the town to ask the state of Tennessee for a refund of unclaimed property that we submitted to them. The property is made of outstanding checks or credit balances on closed utility accounts and vendor accounts that were first held by the town and secondly by the state of Tennessee. This is something we've done for the last several years.
What do we normally get? I mean, what's, sir or not ma'am?
I'll have that for you at the council meeting.
There you go, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to give you homework. Any questions, other questions for Rex? Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is consideration of a resolution to support restoring the historic revenue-sharing relationship between the state of Tennessee and its local governments and to return the local share of the single article cap to local governments. Eric, are you, or Brian?
Yes. Mayor and council, this is something we spoke about last Friday morning with our legislators. The, I think it was in 1996, the change was made and since that time, tax collections have grown considerably, not just for the state but for us. And we're joining with TML and some other partners to ask for consideration through the legislators to move that formula back to the original formula, which would put more tax dollars coming back to the locals. This resolution just puts us in that position to be part of that ask.
Great. Questions for Brian on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 33, parcels 28.00, 44.00, 44.04, and part of parcel 44.02, to go from R1, R3, and C2 with ESO to PRD with ESO. The properties requested to be rezoned contain 37.34 acres and are located on Old Nashville Highway and Rocky Fork Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is a rezoning request for a development called Talia Trace. It's for PRD of 271 townhomes. Nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading, other than you all do have the updated pattern book, which was submitted for, after the planning commission meeting, but before first reading, but it wasn't in time to get it in your packet for first reading. So you all, you do have that updated pattern book. That pattern book actually addresses, there were six conditions, they were placed on the recommendation from planning commission and that update, updated book does address all those conditions with regards to the, you know, the house size and parking and all those various things. So again, so the planning commission did review this, should recommend approval and the staff would also recommend approval of this to you.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the de-annexation of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 62.03, and part of parcel 62.01 requested by John Hill containing 4.13 acres. The property requested is located at 8810 Brawley Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a request, this was something that came in a couple, almost three years ago now, with regards to the Blakeney development and there was a land swap between Mr. Hill and the developer of Blakeney. His property that he ended up with was a part of the city at the time and was not requested to be removed at that time and was requested to be rezoned to R1, so that's what happened. So he has requested that that portion of that property be removed from the town. It is the rear portion of his property, it is vacant, it is difficult for the town to provide any services to that area. And so, planning commission did review this and did recommend approval of the request and staff would also recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item 11, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01 requested by SEC Incorporated on behalf of John Mitchell Burns containing two one-hundredths of an acre. The property requested is located south of Rock Springs Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is just an annexation for a very small area, it's adjacent to an existing subdivision which is under development and this is basically just to enlarge one of the lots in that development. The, nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, staff would also recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 12, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 22-06 relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01 comprising a total of approximately two one-hundredths of an acre. This is our housekeeping item, we'll put that on the agenda. We'll move on to item 13, is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 32, part of parcel 19.01. Kevin?
This is the plan of services for the annexation you just, we just talked about, even though it's such a small area, we still have to adopt the plan of services for it. Again, the town would be providing all services here and so the plan of services does reflect that. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and I would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Have we used them before?
I'm sorry.
Have we used? I'm sorry. Go ahead, into something else.
Sorry about that.
14, under other, anything for Kevin on that? We'll go to 14, under other, and Brian?
Mike's going to speak about it.
Mike's going to take care of it? Hi.
Hey, how are you?
Great.
Good. So we opened bids on Tuesday for the Rock Springs Rehab and Repainting Project, which is a capital project that is budgeted. We had eight bidders and G&amp;L Tank is the low bidder and that is what we would recommend. They also put in add alternates within the existing lump sum bid. There's block letters that say Town of Smyrna, they have given us alternatives. Alternative one would be a black and white seal and alternative two would be a color seal, just like the color seal. And you would be able to see that from the interstate, probably from Nolanville, it would go on two sides of the tank, so.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this?
Yeah, that's where I was getting my head of myself before. Have we used them before?
We have not used them before, but they've done plenty of work and Jerome is checking references now. From what he, he's gathering so far, everything looks great.
Okay, you were saying you'd be able to see the lettering? Did you say you'd be able to see it more with one or the other or just with the lettering?
So within the base bid, it's going to say Town of Smyrna in block letters.
Right.
So again, alternative one would be the town seal, it's going to be big, in black and white. Alternative two would be the town seal in color. And it would go on two sides of the tank, one would kind of face the interstate and the other towards Nolanville.
I think Mike and I have had conversations about this, you know, I think our recommendation would be to put the two, the black and white seal versus just block letters. It just, I think it'll help make it look nicer and be aesthetically pleasing. If you think about, you know, you'd still see Town of Smyrna, Tennessee and everything just like on the seal, it'd just be a little more pleasing to the eye than a bunch of block letters just across the tank.
That's what I was going to ask, was one going to be more crisp than the other?
Yes, that's what we, that would be our, I think, recommendation would be take that first add item.
Questions for Mike or Brian on this? In what you sent us, did they by chance send any renderings or anything?
They did and I didn't send it. I apologize, I was just trying to get it on the agenda.
That's fine, that's fine. We just send them so that we can kind of look at them, that'd be great. Okay. Okay, anything else under other?
No, ma'am.
Rex, you're up. January state share tax.
On the state share tax, of course, these are December transactions, so we received That gives us a $1,027,708 budget surplus. And state sales tax is a main reason for that increasing so much. The January local sales tax, we received $1,750,253 and that gives us a $1,404,101 budget surplus.
Questions or comments for Rex?
Rex, on the sheet that Anita sent us, I don't, I'm trying to see, where is the local tax?
If you're talking about the local tax, that slide's been missing since December.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was on a tab, that's what I was trying to see.
She sends that separately closer to time after I've already sent out my packet and so I usually drop that in the common folder or in the file services folder.
Can we make sure that that's coming at the same time so the council's seeing both of them?
Sure.
Because we don't, I didn't get a chance to look at it today and Steve and I were talking about this earlier. For some reason, it's changed, like you said, since December, we were getting them at the same time.
I know we fixed the one where the, the bar was off, but I didn't realize there was another issue.
Yeah, okay.
Would it be better to put it on at council meeting as opposed to workshop?
Yeah, that might be the answer, I don't know when she's, I don't know when she's getting the information, but, yeah.
I don't think it matters to us whether we get it workshop or just both together.
Just as long as we get them together so we can take a look at them that way.
Okay.
Okay?
Either way, perfect.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Updates, Kathy, anything? Tom?
I just want to mention, obviously we've had quite a bit of rain and as Mark had mentioned earlier, we have had a few phone calls about that. If anybody has seen any flooding areas or anything like that, just please feel free to give us a call to Public Works. I'd like to know where those are at so we can help take care of those issues before they become repetitive issues. So if anybody's out there and knows some locations, feel free to email or contact us in the Public Works Department number back there is 615-459-9766.
Great. Questions or comments for Tom?
No, I would assume that applies for potholes as well, if you see them right, just call in.
Yeah.
I know it's been so wet, you can't, you can't work with them right now, but I know I've had a couple of comments about it.
I had that on my list of stuff that I was going to cover, not only talk about that, that there is, you know, with all the rain we've had, there's, there are some issues and, you know, some of those are just, it is what it is.
It's kind of dry.
We're a little bit in, yeah, you know, a little bit of Smyrna's in a bowl from the standpoint of holding water. Potholes, you know, we've just come out of some pretty severe weather, the salt takes its toll, but, you know, we can't go out and put, you know, mix in a wet hole, it's got to dry out. But the other thing is, you know, we're out and about and our police officers are out and about and we've asked everybody to report those back to us, but we're going to miss some. So, you know, I've taken several phone calls over the last few days and immediately I send it over to the Streets Department, but, you know, for the citizens, if you have a pothole or you see a pothole, if you'll report that to us through the Public Works Department, as Tom just said, we'll get that resolved. But I just want to say thank you to the guys in the Streets Department and the Public Works Department that's been out there, they have really done a good job of trying to keep up. I'll tell you, I came home from Nashville last night in the dark and I thought I was going to have to put shocks on my car when I got back to Smyrna. The roads are terrible on the interstate, you know, everywhere, so it, bad weather unfortunately takes a toll on the road, so.
Other questions?
Just on the same theme with the rain and the flooding, we haven't had too many calls at our department, but I know we still are, people are still wondering some about the revised maps or the flood maps, we still have not received a go-ahead from FEMA on those. But also just want to iterate to everybody that you don't have to be in a flood plane to get flood insurance and there's been a lot of changes in maps and different things and just the way the developments are changing, sometimes the drainage patterns change and things like that, so I would always recommend folks to at least consider that, even if you're not in the flood plane. And the way FEMA is looking at some changes, there may be some changes and even, they're still going to look at the maps and that's going to matter, but it's also going to be, the rates are going to change some, like we talked about several months ago, and it's, those are probably, on April 1st, some folks that are existing are going to get changed. So, and it's going to matter a lot about what your risk, true risk is, not just about if you're in the map, in the map flood plane or not, so.
Great.
Questions for Kevin?
Thanks, Kevin. Chief?
Good.
Good. Jimmy?
Good to be here, good to be here, ma'am.
Great, Mike? Charles?
Mayor and council, just to give you a quick update, Sam Ridley, we're nearing completion on the final pavement markings and then we'll get into our punch list items after that. Lowry Street, we've completed the utility part of it with the water line being completed and ready for our survey team to come in and lay our streetlights out. The stansil's ready to go with all the materials for that. One thing we do have coming up is Blair Road from Sam Ridley Parkway over to the Laverne city limits. The project there, High Point 24 Development in Laverne is going to be rebuilding that road for us, so they will be shutting it down completely from about mid-March to the end of June for, like I said, a total reconstruction of the road and that will be totally at their expense. And they've also acquired the extra right-of-way in the town's name, which they will dedicate to us. Jenny Lane Legals working on the final right-of-way documents and closings on that. And Jefferson Pike, TDOT said they're going to start setting beams March the 1st, so there will be lane closures between 9:00 and 3:00 on that day and that will continue for about the next four weeks or so, there will be setting three a day. So they have about 27 to set for this first phase.
I'm sorry, Joe, what were they setting?
The beams at the bridge of the Stones River, at the river bridge, they'll be setting, so they'll pull in, okay, they'll pull in, set them, and then they'll do one-lane flagging traffic operations and then they'll hopefully get it back open fairly soon to two-lane traffic, just, but they'll be doing it three times a day.
Couple of questions, so I've had people ask me, coming off of Sam Davis, coming off of Sam Hager, I think, where it's cut, where we've had to do the cuts, how much longer is that going to be till we can start beginning to fix those?
Well, like I said, they'll be coming back in, with the streetlights, they'll be, they've gotten a lot of their conduit already in the ground, there's other places that they'll have to come back through, those are from the AT&amp;T cuts.
Right.
So they'll be coming back in those same trenches and then after that, once they get all that underground conduit in, and then we'll be bringing our prime contractor back in to start doing the sidewalks and repairing, but we'll try to keep those up repaired on the potholes. I know Sam Hager is really bad with the water line utility because they did have to get so far out into Sam Hager to make that connection.
And you may not know the answer to this, one of the things we were talking about at our last transportation policy board meeting was the money from the feds for the bridges, that's being allocated for the bridges?
Right, I haven't seen anything that we could maybe tap into, keeping a watch on that.
I know the one that we're really focusing on is that one at Tredon.
Right, but the problem with it, it's an off-system bridge, so it doesn't qualify, but I believe we're, we'll be.
I thought the off-systems did qualify.
Well, this is a local, so I can't go in for like TDOT grant money, but I can go into the bridge grant funding and I'm looking to go on that in March or April because it will now be the lowest-rated bridge in the county, which will allow us to make applications. So I will do that in April and see what type of funding they'll do.
I was hoping that that money would be off-road and then it could, that, then it just, is a matter of where it falls on the list with TDOT, right?
Right, but it's, like I said, a lot of those have to be on the functional classification, it has to be above just a local road.
Okay, okay, perfect. Any other questions for Charles? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Carl, anything?
No, ma'am.
Rex? Mike? Tom? Chief? Amber? Brian?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of things I'd like to share with the council and the mayor tonight. I'm going to start, I guess, on the somber side of some things. We've had quite a bit happen in the last couple of weeks since we've last met. Emily Ackerson, who works in our Treasury Department, her husband's grandfather passed away and wanted to acknowledge that. And then also Brett Beauregard, who is in the booth, I think, tonight, his mother-in-law passed away Sunday night, I believe it was. They'll be attending a funeral, I think, up in Minneapolis. Also, again, on a somber note, we've, we've lost two of our own, our own employees since the last time we met. Jackie Reed from our gas department, 33-year employee, just very well-liked, great employee, has done a great job for us in the gas department, passed away. And then also Thomas Lynch from the golf department, he's been with us, he was, been with us about nine years, was with us temporary or part-time for a while and then came on full-time as one of our maintenance people out there and just wanted to share that with the council, let you know that those are passings. On a more lively note, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Hal Loughlin, who is our golf pro, will be receiving the Distinguished Career Award. He's been an employee with the town of Tennessee, or with the town here in Tennessee, I'm sorry, for 29 years, and this is an award being given by the Tennessee PGA. I'll get all my words in the right order on my sheet here in a minute, but we're very proud of Hal and this award, it's very deserving. Hal has been very innovative and very passionate about the game of golf and he has provided probably one of the, the best golf experiences in a municipal system across the state of Tennessee, takes it very serious and is always very astute with his funding, so really happy to share that news. Stewart's Creek High School, Lady Hawks became, for the first time in the school history, the District 8, 4A champs and very proud of them and the work those young ladies have done and I know the school is very elated about that. I received a nice email from Randy Dover down in our court system, you know, we came to you guys about a year and a half ago and asked you to help us fund a new software program in the clerk's office and we received a really nice letter from one of the attorneys about that system and it said that he practices, practices law all through the middle Tennessee area and he said that this And he said that this is by far the best system that he's had to work with as far as getting into the portal and getting information and those kind of things. I have to point out, he said even better than Davison County and they spent a ton of money on their system. So that was a nice, thank you. Received a letter also from fire captain from the, the county, Larry Farley, to Chief Culberson. They recently at the County Fire Department suffered a loss. And so that their employees could attend the funeral, we covered for them and actually had a call while we was there covering for them. I think it was a car that caught on fire that we had to respond to. But he said he wanted to make sure that everybody knew how much they appreciated the kindness that was allowed to their personnel from, from Smyrna being there to back them up. So thank you, Chief, for what you guys do. Wanted to point out, I mentioned it a few minutes ago, appreciation to our legislative body. Last Friday, we were able to have our annual breakfast. It got postponed because of some bad weather in January, but we had some great conversation with all of our legislators. I think Brian Terry was the only one that was not able to be here. And as most of us know, he is in the medical profession and when he has his Fridays at home, he has to work. So he was in, in the operating room on Friday morning. But I just want to thank our legislators for being here, also the council. And we had a great conversation and I think we've got some good things we're working together with our legislators. Tomorrow will be the last day of our shoe drive for the Leadership Middle Tennessee group. We still are accepting shoes for children of school age, boys and girls. Everything from kindergarten all the way up to adult-sized shoes for the high schoolers and those kind of things. What we're asking for is new athletic-type shoes. Try to keep the cost of those shoes under $20. That way, that's, it's kind of a level playing field. Everything that we collect in Rutherford County, and I know we've got a couple of locations with a couple of our local banks and then here at Town Hall, everything that's collected in Rutherford County will stay in Rutherford County. So there's a, a great need, over 800 requests right now in the county. So if you want to come by and drop some shoes off, we'd appreciate it. But we, we will be wrapping that up tomorrow afternoon. Also, the town is partnering with United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties on our voluntary income tax assistance. That VITA site is located at the back of our building here at Town Hall at 315 South Lowry, on the backside through the double glass doors. They are taking, it's a free service to the community to fill out your taxes. You have to be under, and I'm going to try to go from memory, was it 75? 70, under $70,000 in income. But it's by appointment only and you can call 615-830-7940 or visit their website at www.yerlocaluw.org/vita to schedule your appointments. Traffic has been pretty steady back there, so seems like a lot of people are using that service. The last thing I want to talk about is love where you live. I will tell you, there's been a lot of activity on social media the last couple of weeks about our communities and trash. You know, again, I go back to it's a conscious decision we make, whether we throw trash out of our vehicles or out of the back of our trucks and those kind of things. So please take time to secure the, the trash in the back of your truck as you go to the dump. Or if you're, you know, eating a fast food in your car, don't just roll the window down and throw the trash out. Make sure you dispose of that when you get home or next time you stop at a filling station or something like that. Take a little pride in our community. We've got a beautiful community. But, you know, trash is beginning to be a real problem for us. Not just here in Smyrna, but the county and across the state. I know we had a conversation even with our legislators about some of that. And I think there's some works, things going on in the works with the legislators to increase fines for littering. And that, that could possibly be enacted here in Smyrna as well. So love where you live, folks. Take a little, take a little pride in your community and don't throw your trash out the windows. And I'm off my soapbox. Thank you, Mayor.
Eric? Rock Hill?
Congratulations to Hal on the Distinguished Employee Award and to the Lady Stewart's Creek 4A Champions. And condolences to the Ackerson, the Beauregard, the Reed and the Lynch families. I will continue to keep you in, in my prayers and ask that everyone else do that as well. And I also wanted to say congratulations. Last week was the Parks and Recs volunteer banquet. And so I wanted to again say congratulations to all of the recipients and say that just hearing about the students that have won this year was very inspiring. There, there were a lot of, of good things that were said about the students as well as about the adults who are continuing season after season to volunteer their time and to make Smyrna better. And I actually had several people that came to me and, and talked about that they weren't, they weren't from Smyrna but had moved here and to be able to see the town pay tribute to the volunteers, they thought was an awesome experience and were glad to be able to participate in that. So I'd say thank you all for Mike and the committee who puts that on. It was, it was a great job, a great job done by all. That's it.
Great. H.G.?
Well, Kayla didn't mention Carolyn by name, but Carolyn Peebles, she, great aunt?
My aunt.
Just auntie. Okay. Was the recipient this year and she was a very well-deserving individual for this. She's put a lot of years in a whole lot of different parts of our community and going all the way back to the J.C.'s starting baseball many, many years ago and currently active in the Rotary Club, the Alert CDC program that she works in, and then very active in her church also. She was quite deserving. And then shop local, be kind. That's all I've got.
Yeah, I add my condolences to our Smyrna family for their losses. Congratulations to Hal for all that he does for the golf course and the community. You know, goes beyond just playing golf, especially with the activities they have for kids. First tee, struggling for a little bit to remember that. But so much good goes on. Carolyn Peebles, well-deserving. And you know all the volunteers. When, when you're there and you're listening to the hours and the efforts that are put in by all the volunteers at all the different levels, it's amazing and we're blessed to live in this community. And I wouldn't be, I, I would be amiss if I didn't mention that my grandson is at home watching us tonight. And so Anders Johnson, thanks for watching. We'll have some more discussion about government and save me a slice of pizza, please.
There you go. Jerry?
Yeah, just, again, I want to add my condolences to the families of our employees that have lost loved ones, certainly your, in our thoughts and our prayers as well. Congratulations to Hal. He does do a fantastic job and we're fortunate to have him and so appreciative of what he does at the, at the golf course. Also, congratulations to Stewart's Creek as well on their accomplishment. That's fantastic. That's a tough, tough district. And again, like the others, it said, the Volunteer of the Year banquet. Mike, you and your team did a fantastic job of putting that together. It's a big crowd, probably the biggest one. I, I know it was the biggest one that I've ever been to, but congratulations to the, to the winners and to all the volunteers. Even though there's a lot that, that won, we have a lot out there that, that volunteered every day and we appreciate that. And Ms. Carolyn, just congratulations to you and thank you for, for what you've done for, for our town. Last thing I've got is this Saturday, the Sister City is hosting a chili supper at the Senior Citizens Hall. And that's going to be from 4:30 to 6:30. So if you're not doing anything and you want some good food, just come out and help support that. And for those that have already supported and done some things there, we really appreciate it. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Steve?
Also, congratulations to Carolyn. I honestly didn't realize how much she had done until they started kind of going through the list and it just kept piling on. And she's very well-deserving, great, great community leader and, you know, always a joy to be around. So it was very good. But, you know, along those lines, there were, every league was also represented there. And I know it's hard to look outside and see it today, but spring is coming. And it's just a few days away, really. If you look at the calendar for, or the, the weather for next week, I think it's sunny in 60s every day. But all of those leagues that were represented there at the Volunteer of the Year banquet are starting their signups right now. So youth baseball, youth, girls' fast pitch softball, adult softball, soccer. I don't think, I don't know about flag football. They may be.
I think they're done.
I think they're done. I know youth football's not doing any things. But basketball's probably going to be getting started soon as well. So just, if you go to the Town of Smyrna's website, there are links there from Parks Department to all of those leagues, so you can go sign up for those activities. Also, the next council meeting, I will be on vacation. I will not be here, so this seat will be empty, Jerry. You can move over next to Mark if you want to. But we'll be visiting California for probably our last time. My son left to go back to Camp Pendleton this week and he will be there for three or four more weeks. And officially, his last day in the Marine Corps is April 1st. So it's hard to believe four years has already passed. And based on the news this week, I don't think April 1st is going to come fast enough for the Sullivan family. But anyway, yeah, so keep me, keep my family in your, your prayers as we travel across country. That's it.
Thanks.
Same condolences to all the families that have been mentioned here this evening, employees and relatives of employees. We, we actually take that to heart. We do say our prayers for each one of those people. So I want to pass my condolences on to them. The Lady Hawks, congratulations. That's awesome news to know that we have a local school doing so well. So congratulations, ladies. The Parks and Rec event, Mike, all your staff, Jimmy, all you guys did a wonderful job. And Carolyn was well-deserved in being named for that award. And, you know, it all started many, many years ago with this young lady's father and grandfather and the, the volunteer attitude that we have here in our community is just second to none. And a lot of good recipients along the years. I know the years I've been doing this, there's been a lot of people named to that, to receive that award. And Carolyn's right up there. She deserves every bit of the acknowledgement she got the other night. And on that, I'd like to mention that our chef and his staff, as always, pulled off another amazing banquet and did another amazing job. So if you guys need a place to eat lunch, man, go down to the Town Center Tuesday.
Tuesday through Friday.
Tuesday through Friday. Yeah. Congratulations to Hal, being the golfer that carries my team. Now that I have a partner to help me, we know how, how hard Hal works after Mary Esther and H.G. have played on the course. And there's a lot of work to be done out there.
A lot of club marks.
A lot of club marks, yeah, with divots and things like that, so.
Have you had that issue?
I always play my own divots.
I don't have that issue.
Hal works hard and he's well-deserved to win the Tennessee PGA Distinguished Career Award that he was acknowledged with. Also, not mentioned yet tonight, I know Chief would probably agree, there was an announcement that Deanna Patton won Dispatcher of the Year and Justin Hayden Officer of the Year. Congratulations to both of them from all of us. I got a nice little email and a contact from, it's a past client of mine who lives over in Lake Pharma Estates. And his name is Steve and Angie Newell. And Steve contacted me the other day just to tell me. He said, "I want you to make sure in a world of complaining, I want to be one of those positive voices and bring up an appreciation that I have for two people that work at the Town of Smyrna." One was Dennis Blair and the other was Mark Hardy. They were adding a garage back on the back of their property there and they went through codes and all the inspections that come along with it. And Steve told me, he said, "Mark, you know, it's not always easy going through all that process. They're firm, but they're fair." So that says a lot about those two gentlemen and the people that work at the town. So Dennis and Mark, I saw Mark at the event the other night. I'll let him know. I haven't seen Dennis, but I hope he's watching or you'll pass this along to Dennis. Lastly, good friends of mine, Rick and Shirley Barrett, their son Shane. Rick called me Wednesday night a week ago and Shirley unexpectedly passed. So I just want to give my condolences to Rick and Shane. It's sort of a sudden loss for them. They didn't really see this coming. And Shirley was one of those people, she'd smile at you, she'd hug you, and she was just a sweet, sweet spirit. So I want to send my condolences publicly out to, to Rick and Shane this evening. And that's all I have.
Great, thanks. Couple of housekeeping items. I think we have a photo from the Volunteer of the Year banquet. I also want to thank the Parks Department for hosting such a great event. I can't tell you the amount of time that they put in decorating tables and preparing the scripts and, and doing all that. Carolyn was the recipient of the 2021 Kenneth Coon Victory Lifetime Service Award and she is in the red. Rachel Johnson and Holly Pendergrass, both students at Smyrna High School were recipients of the 2021 Young Leader Awards and to hear their stories was so impressive. Our Business of the Year this year was Smyrna SRM Concrete and we want to thank the Hollings Heads for all they do for the community. We also want to congratulate all our rec league players and coaches who were recognized for your dedication and sportsmanship. It sure was an honor to get to celebrate each one of you. One of the things that we added a couple of years ago was the rec league players. And it wasn't, it's not always about the player that's the best player. It's not about the one who hits the homerun. It might be the worst player on the team, but it might be that, that player's the one who's the encouraging player. And so it's pretty inspiring to sit and hear about some of these kids that are coming up in our leagues and what those volunteers are doing to help foster not only learning the game of whatever sport they're learning, but how to just be good citizens, how to be good teammates and good people. So there's no way we could put our leagues on without the volunteers that we have here in Smyrna. So thank you to all of them. Second is, have you ever thought about serving your community? If so, joining a town board or committee is a way you might choose to do that. We're accepting applications through the 28th. You can go online at townofsmyrna.org and check out what boards and committees we have. It tells you a little bit about each board and committee and also the time commitment and what days that they meet. We would love to consider your name for appointment to the boards and committees, which we will be doing at our March meeting. Also, want to take this opportunity to thank Cub Scout PAC 482 for your hospitality on Tuesday night. We had a great time. You know, sometimes you get those night meetings and, oh, you're thinking, oh, it'd be so nice to go home. But I have to tell you, once I get to those, to get in front of the kids again and to hear the questions that they ask, they always have great questions. And so you can tell they ranged in age from probably about five to 13. Also give the adults a chance to ask questions and they always have questions about what's going on in our community. So thanks to Cub Scout PAC 482 for allowing me to come speak to you all. Our Project Delivery Task Force met for our fourth meeting. This is made up of mayors, town managers, engineers, T-Dot staff from our MPO board and talking about ways that we can hopefully move projects through T-Dot faster. And we are getting some great ideas and hopefully we can come to some resolution on some things. I know some things are just dictated by federal highway and have to be done, but hopefully we can come up with some things that will speed the process along. Brian came to sit in on the meeting and I appreciate him doing that, but there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes with this committee. Also want to congratulate Truman Jones. Brian and I were on his show.
Last week.
Last week. And Truman will be retiring from his show March 1st and we just want to congratulate Truman. Truman has kept the history of Rutherford County alive through his radio show and has always been very gracious to us and is always very complimentary of the Town of Smyrna. So we appreciate Truman and all that he does. Last, Hal, also want to congratulate Hal. Hal does great things at the golf course, whether it's the Special Olympics First Tee Program or daily golf. But the other thing Hal does is he's involved in the community. He's involved in his church and does so much to help make Smyrna a better place. So congratulations to Hal and we look forward to celebrating you next week. Last but not least, Amber and I got to have a special day last week? This week? Last week? Last week. Christina Kous got in touch that she wanted to come back and bring Sloan and Calvin with her. And we kind of didn't. her, and we kind of didn't let anybody know on the front end, they kind of wanted their time there at the memorial. The kids had not been back to see the memorial, but I will say, they were all in a great place, they seemed very happy, they seemed very content, and so appreciative of not only the memorial, but the support that the town has shown them and their family. Anything you want to add to that, Amber?
I don't think so, I mean, like you said, that it was the first time that the kids were able to visit the memorial, so they got to play on the Freedom Playground, she was very complimentary of it, and the job that Rotary had done tying in the aesthetics of the memorial into the playground, and they just, they enjoyed their time over there. She said they played, they laughed, they cried, and just really a good time for them to reflect and bring perspective, and she, of course, expressed her love for the Town of Smyrna and everybody that contributed to the memorial, so.
So, it was a special day, but I just wanted the public to know, who I know have all been curious, that they really seem to be doing well, all three of them, so we were glad to get to spend a little time with them while they were on what they called their winter break. Council, anything else? Staff, anything else? If nothing else, we are adjourned.